Okay, at this time I'd like to call to order this meeting of the, you ready? Everybody good? Genoa Township Trustees, this is a zoning meeting, it's the only hearing we'll have this evening. The time is 6:30 PM, the date is August 15th, 2024. Can I get roll call, Joe?
Roll call, trustee Antonets.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Here.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Also present with us tonight is Joe Shaper, Director of Development and Zoning, Paul Benson, Deputy Zoning Inspector. This meeting of the Genoa Township Trustees will be recorded. The meeting audio and written minutes will be available on our township website at www.genoattp.com or by contacting Genoa's Fiscal Office. Now, I'd like to call to order the following hearing at 6:31 PM. The Mindy Cosman, right, requesting approval of a filed development plan to construct an approximately 2,400 square foot office building on approximately 1.09 acres at 5064 South Old 3C Highway, Westerville, Ohio 43082. Property ID number 31724003019000, currently zone plan Commercial District, also known as the Olive Branch, ZC Case Number 2024-03. This is continued from the July 22nd hearing of this year. I would ask anybody who is prepared to speak or thinks they'll have to speak to be sworn in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. For the record, the following exhibits were revised or added. Exhibit C, the sign-in sheets. Exhibit I, public comments received from April 15th of this year to August 15th. Exhibit J, revised plans received August 9th. Exhibit K, correspondence with Genoa Township Fire Marshal and Delaware County Engineers Office between August 12th and the 13th of 2024. At this time, I'll ask Joe Shaper for staff report.
Uh, thank you trustee Antonets. I don't have a formal report prepared for this evening since I gave my formal report at the last hearing. And the purpose of this meeting, you had asked the applicant to prepare some alternatives and present them to you this evening. So they've done that. So I think it really makes more sense for them probably to sort of present to you the alternatives they come up with. And then I assume at some point the board will have discussion determine which path you wish to go down. And I can inform you of what we need to do depending on the path you decide you want to go down. So the materials include a cover letter, we have a soil analysis investigation report, a drawing of the site as currently officially proposed, along with some 3D renderings of what that would look like. And then an alternative site design that they have provided along with 3D renderings of what the alternative site design would look like. And then also late today, we received sort of, I guess it would be alternate number two, a variation of the alternative site design, also for your consideration. I like that to as part of exhibit K, since we received it today. It's, they're, I don't want to say substantially similar to the alternative site plan, but it has more in common with the alternative site plan than the original site plan. So with that, I think it's probably more appropriate to turn it over to the applicant and have them present their materials to you.
Okay, thanks Joe. Applicant, come on, come up.
Thank you. Thank you for having us back tonight. I apologize for the number of iterations and paperwork, things that you have.
Name and address please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mindy Cosman, 5618 Harrow Glen Court, Galena 43021.
Whenever you're ready to speak, you have to all do it now. Come on, you want, are you speaking now?
Um, so at the conclusion of the last meeting, I think that in summary, we had discussed that the concerns were that the building was very close to the roundabout. We discussed that the right in, right out posed some potential safety concerns, which I would agree with. And up to that point, I was unaware of that. We were unaware that that was not going to be an accommodation within the apron of the roundabout and that it would be right in, right out only. That was, that was news to us. And so that took us back to the drawing board regardless, because that actually wasn't okay with me either. And when the first building drawings were sent to me back in April, I noticed that and said, this, this doesn't work. People are going to head west on Big Walnut, they're going to turn down this brand new cul-de-sac, and we're going to be public enemy. Number one, that's not being a good neighbor. That's not what I want. It's, it's not good flow. It's not good for resale value later. It just really restricts the property. That is not what I wanted. And I said, that's not an option. Regardless of how it is that the miscommunication occurred, it did occur. And ultimately, we were under the impression that that pass through would be made. And so we proceeded with the plan. And that is why we brought to you the iteration that we did. Understand that when we came the first time with our proposal, it was with the consideration that there were three non-negotiables for me. When I met with my crew for the first time, when I met with the builder, when we sat down with the architect, that was that we were not moving the septic, because the septic system was believed to be functional and has since been proven to be functional. And that was an expense that I did not want to incur. The next fixed thing was the garage. We had already invested in repairing the garage significantly. It had water in it when we purchased the property. There were a lot of just structural things with that. We had already repaired all of that. We wanted to keep that. And the third thing that I considered fixed when we were looking at iterations of what to do with the property was that I did not want to use the shared drive. There were multiple reasons for that. The primary one was along the good neighbor lines. I think that understanding that the property to the north of us is commercial is important, but it's also been used as a residence for some time and will be used as a residence for the foreseeable future. And so it was not an option in my mind to use the shared drive. So when we have come forth and met with the commission and stated that what we had proposed was, was the version that would work, that was the foundation on which those arguments were made. With coming back last time and discussing the fact that in fact that pass through was not going to be an option, that took us back to the drawing board and looking at, at multiple options. And so ultimately, we wanted to move the drive toward the roundabout so that people had the option for entrance and egress from, from both directions. And that was a priority. And so we really looked at multiple options on how to make this all function and still stick with my primary objectives of keeping the septic, not using the shared drive, and keeping the garage. Ultimately, that's not possible. Or at least, we were unable to figure out a way for that to be possible. And so with that, I elected to concede moving the septic system. The mound would remain where it is, but we would move the tanks. And, and that is a considerable cost with, with moving the drive. That also is a considerable cost as well. Will you do me a favor and hand those one to each person, please? Because we're laying significant more concrete than we were with, with the previous drive. This version that's on the board is not what we're proposing today. I understand that this is what you saw last week. And ultimately, the reason that this is a fail for us is because of the fact that when, when we were developing this before Structure Point was able to be involved, we thought that we were going to be able to clear the garage. And the bottom line is that we cannot. And so this particular version would force us to bring down the garage as well and have to move that to a different location on the property. And so that's something that I just cannot fiscally manage at this time. So what was just handed to you, and just for the sake of the record and the community, this is a breakdown of the rough cost increase based on the fact that we will be getting new septic tanks, changing the location, putting down extra pavement, of course, having to rework, rework some utilities and things. And that comes to the, the cost of $128,000 approximately. Understand that the building budget when we sat down for this project was $400,000. So that's a 32% change. So with that, what we're presenting today and what unfortunately you didn't get until probably you arrived today, is, is the iteration that preserves the garage, that allows entrance and egress from Big Walnut, that does not use the shared drive, and is respectful, I believe, to the neighbors to the north of us, as well as those particularly in the cul-de-sac to the west of us, where I believe people would choose to turn around. So this is what I think best meets the needs of all of us, understanding that we have moved further back from the road by quite a bit. This gives us the ability to place landscaping between Big Walnut and the building, which I know was discussed last time. And we very much want as well. You can't see it pictured there, obviously, but that is certainly the intention. And we want that for screening for, for the building from the road as well. And so this is what we believe at this point is most financially responsible and doable for us. I think I've reached the capacity of, of where I can compromise. And I want to believe that this particular version meets all of our needs.
Anything further from applicant?
I'd like to say that we spent, oh yeah, William Myers, 13846 Ullery Road, Sunbury, Ohio. So we spent a lot of time looking at different options. We drug this building around the site every which way we could, trying to find a good spot for it that would accommodate the building as well as parking. And, you know, with the, what you know of the septic system in the mound, keeping that, that it's really the only place the mound can go. The rest of, we had the rest of the site tested to see if there was an alternative location for the mound as well. And there is not. So it's, we're stuck with the mound there. And then trying to preserve the garage and then preserve the access so people can go east and west. It was challenging, very challenging. We spent a lot of time. So from what we submitted last Friday with the building, the long side of the building pointing towards the center of the cul-de-sac would be the preferred layout. But once we started working with Structure Point to try and see if that would work, that only put that corner, that building, a foot off of the right of way and overlapped with the garage. And even trying to turn that building, you get too close to the mound system, it starts impacting on parking, just a number of things. So that's when we looked at turning the building 90 degrees for what we submitted as an edit of what we submitted on Friday. The other thing on this is, you know, talking with Joe, you know, if Mindy decides to sell or 20 years from now retires or whatever, how can this building be used in the future? And what is a good layout for the community beyond just what Mindy wants to do with it? We tried to take that into consideration. So in the future, if someone wanted to move into this and they wanted to get rid of the garage, they could just extend additional parking over that space. And now you have a long, continuous strip of parking as opposed to have the parking broken up on each side of the garage. So tried to take that into consideration. So we put a lot of effort in. Really, this is really the only thing that works outside of what we proposed init- initially. And like Mindy said, with that access to the driveway, that was a non-starter for her after the last meeting. So, and we talked to the fire department multiple times, the engineer's office multiple times, proposed a couple different driveway locations, and this seemed to be a good fit for everybody's needs and was acceptable. So.
Mark O'Robeau, Kail Builders, 2355 Cross Creek Court, West Central Ohio 43035. I'd just like to also say, I, I really think, I mean, Bill, I put in a ridiculous amount of time as well as the rest of our team. And I know Mindy did too, and Ron. And they really tried and kind of opened up the purse strings, even though I know what a challenge it's been for her budgeting and all that. And cost can't always be the only factor in it. But she is an enlarged developer. She's working very hard to try to afford this. And we're trying to help what we can. But there's a real cost to even exploring the altern- alternatives. And we didn't, we even forego, forewent some of that just to try to do it. But you wouldn't believe the stack, heck, Joe, we come to see, bothered poor Joe, I can't tell you how many times ourself, to try to meet with him also, to try to even find some alternative ways, creative ways, like talking, there's going to be a green space next door, a, a part of the Mulberry Estates, you know, is there a chance we could get an easement that way to make that access a little further west to maybe be able to help the access on that? Or could we have a septic mound there that would help line the building up different so we could, you know, I just, I'm just really talking to the fact that we really have moved puzzle pieces around many different ways. And it is a challenging site. But I do think what, I think even in, in this where it's costing Mindy more to even consider it, much less do it, she's really trying to, what, what struck me is her mindfulness of her neighbors and trying to be a good neighbor, even with the challenging site, despite the extra cost. And it's not just about cost, it's what is going to, Joe made, Joe was very poignant to say, well, even if she's here 20 years or, or whatever, the township has to live with this from now on. I think, and I'm not saying there's not some magical epiphany that could come out that there is a better way to do it. But from the parameters given, I think we have some alternatives that is good for the community. Cause ultimately, this probably will get developed and hopefully it's us. And hopefully it's with a, a business that would be good. Because there's a lot of things that could maybe, even with the Hoover overlay, there's a lot of things that could go in that maybe wouldn't be as pleasing, straight up diagonal from the, from the township hall. But that's kind of it, is of what we're doing. And we also reached out a lot on costing. It's not exact cost. We have some estimates on some stuff, but we tried to get very good pricing to give at least an approximate range. But until you know exactly what you're building, it's hard to know exact. But it feels very much in market rate, even, you know. And some of our contractors like, man, I hate this for Mindy. We can get this a little bit better. And so we're, we're trying to be very reasonable in all the requests. But at some point, there has to be an approach that we can all, if it's a compromise, that we can all hopefully move forward with, instead of it just, I'd hate for this to die on the vine for the township, for Mindy, for us, for everybody involved. But that's all I had to say.
I will make one more comment too. We even had Gunsman look at changing the footprint of the building. You know, we had an established footprint, still wanted to keep the six auspices. But what if we reduced the length of the building and, and made it a little bit wider to still accommodate the square footage? And that didn't help fit it onto the site in a usable fashion either. So.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, at this point, we'll open up the public comment. If anybody wants to speak, please come forward, turn on the microphone, give your name and address. We don't use a clock here, but I respect people's time, right, Mr. Wieland?
Thank you, sir. Yes. Rick Wieland, 9500 Britton Woods Drive, Galena. Since I wasn't, I don't know, I wasn't privileged to any of this new information.
You weren't either.
You weren't either and stuff. So, so it's hard to address a lot of this stuff, just taking it in at this point. So a lot of other things had to be considered. So I guess you got to go back to the fire department and see what it does and everything else. So. One of my questions would be as far as fire trucks and stuff, getting in and out of that stuff. If the fire department has to turn in and back a vehicle out of those areas? Or if that's up to them to do that stuff? It'd just be a concern that needs to be brought up.
This new drawing has been reviewed by the fire department?
Not this one. This one we just got today. The first alter, Paul, can you click back to the other alternate layout? This one, fire department reviewed. And of the original proposal on this, if I recall correctly from the correspondence I forwarded, the fire department preferred this. The latest design, as you can see, is slightly different. That driveway shifts slightly further east. But the curvature of the interior drive is also not as severe. The turnaround area at the back, some of those spaces aren't hatched out anymore, but there is a pretty significant area to try to maneuver back there. So of course, if this is an option the, you know, the room decides to proceed with, we would send it to fire again for another review as part of the full review. Cause we'll need a whole new package of everything with all the updates. So I don't want to speak for them, but this is.
Yeah, the parking's not significantly different.
No, I, I'm sure probably from your eyes, you could probably see, I, I think they're comfortable with making it work. I'd be surprised if fire would say that this wouldn't work. But I just don't want to speak for them. Yeah, as far as, yeah, once, when we get into that new drawing, then you do have a lot of different parking stuff. They've got parking right up to the lot line, it looks like, on most of the areas of the property, which is a consideration for snow removal and that type of stuff. It'd be nice to see some, some type of buffer between the parking lot and the lot line on a commercial property, instead of having it right up against a property line with no landscaping, no screening, that type of stuff to be able to put in there. That's not a very advisable situation to do that type of thing. I presented a couple other drawings, and I, I appreciate these people trying to do stuff with stuff here. But we're not in the game here to, to, to accommodate somebody as far as our financial means or anything else as far as zoning goes. You know, we want to get the best stuff for the best piece, piece of property. And it's not a matter of depending on somebody's cost. If they can't afford to do it, then they might have to sell the property. We're not in the game of giving them stuff to make it work for, for their prices that they want to pay to get stuff in there. There's other drawings that can be submitted for this. You can get 12 different architects and you'll get 12 different designs. I'm not comfortable with all the divergences and stuff that were in the first one. And I see a lot of divergences and stuff in this one also. It doesn't show the neighbor's driveway going in there on this plan, which I think needs to be taken into consideration on what happens because of their shared driveway. Maybe there is a possibility to still keep a shared driveway and share another entrance and have two access points for this property, which might be beneficial for everybody. Customers at that site and the fire department, to be able to get in and out without trying to back a vehicle around in that type of business. So something has to be considered for that other access point. And I don't see that on any of their drawings, the previous ones, this new iteration or not. Uh, septic is still a big issue. I see, you know, I turned in a drawing or whatever, gave them a little copy of one that had an area for additional septic mound area. And it was about in the back of the property where they have this new parking lot all paved in there. So with this drawing that they have, I don't think they have any areas that have undisturbed soil to where they'd be able, able to have a secondary mound system for this leach field. And I really think that they need to talk to a septic design person. I think they do, they, they had a soil study done, but they didn't have, they didn't follow through and have a design done. So what they're going to find out when they do their design is that septic mound that they have is not probably sufficient for the amount of people in this building. And if that's the case, it could blow their whole thing up and not go anywhere. So it would be advisable to come back to the board with all these things before we have to consider any divergences and additional stuff on their system. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Okay, so it's time we take it to the board. Comments, concerns?
Joe, I, I think at one point, somebody addressed Mr. Wieland's sketch that he passed out last meeting.
I did talk about it with the fire marshal, and they did not prefer that design.
That's what I thought. I just needed somebody to confirm.
It was not desirable to them.
Yeah, okay. So, so this one, or the previous one, one that's similar, the one that we got before this meeting was preferred.
Yeah, the original polls that we heard last in July, or this one. They said either will work. They can live with either one of those.
Okay.
I asked them, okay, understanding that, if you had your druthers, which would you prefer? And they said the al-
Yeah.
The original alternate design. Like I said, they haven't seen this one on the screen.
Right.
But it's substantively similar in many ways.
Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Sure.
You can jump in there. Okay. We had a resident discuss stormwater drainage. Can you tell us with, with this design, how the, one that you presented us last meeting had a basin under the parking lot. How will you manage it with this new plan?
Ben Schilling, 122 South Otterby in Westerville. We had originally shown a detention basin because we anticipated that the county would require it. After talking with the engineer's office, they actually determined that the LeMist disturbance was under the threshold. So we would imagine that they would have a similar stance here. But I think we do have to go back to them to just confirm that.
Okay.
I think there is a little bit more space to be able to do that with this layout. But I think six in one, half a dozen the other, probably be able to get it to work with either site plan.
Okay. You, you moved the parking lot to the norm- You, you moved the parking lot to the north of the property, and I'll say on our right, looking at this plan. Where the original plan had your sept, current septic at the bottom, and then the alternative septic site at the north, where is your alternative site in this plan?
After having the soil samples done, we don't have an alternative site. The mound where it currently is, is the only place for that. We can move the tanks anywhere, right? So, the tanks will go near the garage, near the mound. The discussions with soils and our engineer that does work on septic systems, as well as the, the guy that tested the system and proved that it's okay and confirmed, gave that report to the health department, said that if this were to fail in a year or whatever, then we'd be able to put in a couple additional tanks, an aeration tank and another tank, and then have that drain directly off. And that is an acceptable system and would be the remediation for the current septic design.
Okay. And so, do you know that where your groundwater will end up af, you know, if, if you are gonna have this underwater basin underneath the parking lot, where was it eventually going to lead? Do we know?
You want to talk to that, or is that part of the septic design? Well, you've got the storm sewer out here.
Sorry, are you talking about the septic or...
Storm water. Yeah.
So, there, there's an inlet that's at the, kind of the, in between the two circles of the roundabout that we would tie into.
Okay. And that's part of...
This one here?
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry, I wasn't looking. I was thinking it was gonna show up on the other screen. It didn't.
You want to show that again, Joe?
Yeah, sorry, no problem. It's, they're talking about, they're, this is the inlet right here. So, they'll, I imagine, anything that's catching water is just gonna have a line that just runs right into that.
And there's also a basin just to the west of the driveway.
Oh, yep, right here. Right here. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yep.
All right, and then it'll go underground with whatever the county does with it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I have for now.
One, on the septic too.
Yes.
Steve Miller was the original designer of this septic mound. He did the soil sample tests. He's the one who provided the backup for this, and he also come out, and as the remediation, he said that is a backup remediation. He's the one, he's the original designer, the one working on this, one working with our septic guy. And he had originally said, you know, there was an original that's not gonna be there because of the right of way as well, that was a backup area. But he had also said, parallel to that, there, there is probably room, but basically where the mound is, is the only area on the site that can. So, there's a semi-backup, but then there's the other that he told Bill about a full backup if, for some reason, that proved to not be acceptable. And just to address what Mr. Whelan had said too, the back had been disturbed. We couldn't have put a, the si, the septic soil testing they did shows all that's compacted or it's been disturbed already. There's, there's no spot except where the mound is, potentially parallel, and then the backup remediation that we're doing. Of course, the tanks can go over there, but I just wanted to make that clear. And also that, he said he didn't think the septic would work. It's been tested to work. We, we hooked up temporarily, new pumps, floats and all that into the existing, and checked the pressure flow and all the, they put on the test valves, all of that, and the health department come out and monitored that to all be within tolerance.
Okay, thank you.
My question is to, my first one anyway, is to Mr. Shaver. Earlier, a comment was made about the existing house to the north, that that was a commercial property. I thought that was residential.
It's residentially used, but it's commercially zoned.
But it is zoned commercial. Okay.
That's why, like, the parking up against the, sorry, I'm gonna walk back to the TV here. So, this parking field is up against commercial, because this property line sort of comes to a point here.
Okay.
So, yeah, all of that would be commercial zone, or, commercial zoning exists. I think both this and this, I think, used to be owned by the same person, which is why it's probably the way it is. I think the guy who used to run the general store used to live in the house next door supposedly.
Somehow that made sense years ago.
Decades ago. Actually found aerial imagery of what that looked like back in like the seventies, and it was, little gas, there was two little gas pumps out front, and, yep.
And the outhouse. Yeah, we all remember that.
And the outhouse.
Okay. I was never a fan of the first iteration, as you know. I was very concerned about the driveway. I looked at the second one, and it's a whole lot better. I really liked this third one. And, and the reason for that is because when you look at the alignment, right here, that is directly, or pretty darn close, to the actual roundabout. So, you, there's no jogs or funny, funny things there. I think that that will help the traffic flow a great deal. I also like the fact, and I don't know, the fire department, I can't speak for them, but it would appear to me, if I were pulling in a truck, I'd like that longer driveway without parking on either side of it. So, that seems to be a benefit. I am concerned for those lovely homes in Mulberry Estates, that again, a parking lot is going to be right next to their entrance. So, I would encourage you to think when you talk about buffering and landscaping, to put something along that row so that when people go into that area, they have a lovelier view than a parking lot. You know, few trees are not that expensive. And I'm very pleased that we're going to have to check with fire and then get the exact plans to zoning and development for this, because although this is helpful and it looks good conceptually, there's a lot more to it.
It's only conceptual, right?
Yeah.
It was for discussion to see if it was acceptable to then finish it out.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I agree. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Can you put this rendering up?
Yeah, Paul, can you pull up the...
Be more helpful for visualization.
Is that the 3D of the most current design?
Yeah, uh, that one. I think it will help the residents understand that it's not right up on the pavement. That's, that's extremely helpful. I think we're getting there, but there still are some issues. I, I, I fully agree with Connie, Trustee Goodman about the parking with a one-foot setback up against residential. And I can't tell them this, what's your parking requirement and what's provided on here, Joe?
Sorry. The building's the same. I believe we calculated that you are required under the code 12 spaces, and they're at, I believe, at 15, so they do have a little bit of wiggle room. Now, they may want more than 12 spaces.
Yeah. That's just my concern. I think it's too close to residential. The screening, I think, is appropriate, commercial versus residential. And take these notes, because this, these are gonna need to be addressed. I, I'm, I'm also, would like to give the residents a chance to see this new plan, and I think us getting it the day of the meeting, actually, the minute of the meeting is, is not adequate enough to get proper public input.
Understood.
But we're getting there. But I do also have some other concerns, and one is, we are seeing the back of the building. It's not the front of the building. And that's shown with that view there. The bu, that, I like the fact that the building looks like a residence in this residential setting. It's unfortunate that we're seeing the back of the building. And I also noticed that you don't address your mechanicals, and I would hope that the mechanicals aren't gonna be all in this back of this building, which is where they usually go.
West end by the garage.
All right, so I, I want you to take these notes, guys, if we can address these.
Yep.
The other is, what you're doing for trash pickup. If there's a dumpster, then you're gonna have to identify a dumpster pad somewhere on here also.
There's no dumpster. I anticipate this building generating less trash than my family of four. A lot of people are paperless. My medical record is electronic. The only trash I'm generating is if someone comes in with a Starbucks cup and, and dumps it in my trashcan.
Dumpster, that's fine.
No dumpster.
Let's talk a little bit about this, this septic system. I think, first of all, if, what I understand, you, you're required to provide a secondary location for your permit. And the purpose of that is, if yours fails, you have an alternate one, or if it doesn't use its useful life. If you're proposing that when, how old is this leach field?
15 years.
15 years, so it's probably got five years left. That's about the lifespan of a leach field. So, what you're proposing is essentially a treatment plant and discharging to what? Because now you're talking about getting a NPDS permit from the EPA to discharge into our storm sewers or a receiving stream. And I want you to know, Mrs. Cosman, what's required to get an NPDS permit from the EPA for a wastewater treatment plant discharge is expensive and lengthy, and it will shut down your operation. So, I think you need to come up with a better answer than a statement from someone that hasn't been to this meeting about, you need to come up with a plan that, how that's gonna get addressed, because the building will get condemned if this system fails and you don't have a backup, a viable backup. The stormwater, I understand the county's putting storms structures in the roundabout. I would like to get confirmation that your property is tributary to that storm sewer, because if it's not in their plan as tributary to this storm sewer, you will not get like a connection on it. So, that's another thing you need to confirm. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, but aren't we doing this before they ever get to installing the roundabout? And there's already that storm sewer to the west of the...
I would say that you can get an answer from the, the county on whether you can do a discharge into their storm sewer.
Yep.
Because I can assure you, they've already determined they're tributary for this storm.
Okay.
And it may just be the street.
Yep.
This is for your benefit.
Yep.
Landscaping, you have a divergence on your landscaping that is, is very ambiguous. It just says custom landscaping, that's not adequate. So, we need a landscape plan.
Yep.
See, there was some other divergence I had a question about. Oh, the sign setback. Why are we getting divergence on the sign setback?
Well, with the previous layout, how close the parking in the building were to the ri, the new right of way, this design will have a single sign that'll be on the corner and setback a bit further. Should be able to accommodate that and update the FDP to reflect that.
So, you're, you're, the sign setback is 10 feet and you're asking for a two-foot setback?
Yeah, we'll be able to go to 10 foot now.
Try to minimize as many of these divergences.
Hundred percent.
Can you stand the setback ones? That, I've, we've been through this before. It's an awkward development on a very small site. I understand the setbacks, but there are some things we can do on here to try to minimize these divergences.
Yep.
And that's what we're all trying to do, strive to do.
Understood.
So, that's all my comments.
Just the antennets, if I may, just, even though I haven't done a full review of it, I did glance at the width of the parking, of the drive aisle adjacent to those parking spaces, and, and some of those areas, it's only about 22, it's 22 feet as you get into it. And then it, it blows out in front of the spaces, so you may hit, hit 25 as it continues to widen out, but there may be a small area where they're maybe not quite at 25 feet for a 90-degree parking space. Now, so that might be a divergence, possibly, so just letting you know. Now, for shallower angle parking, we do allow for narrower driveways, so, and it's hard to say, because this isn't truly a conventional line degree parking space either, right? It's, it's somewhat, it's an odd angle in terms of how it's coming in and how the drive is working in conjunction with those spaces. So, it just might be something we need to take a closer look at. I mean, I know the board previously had said, if they otherwise like the design, understanding you want to choose divergence as possible, but if, if you otherwise like the design, you might entertain the divergence. But since you were talking about divergences, I just wanted to make you aware that there might be an additional one at least, in my first glance on the drive aisle width.
And I, I would agree with that, that there's a pinch point there that might need to be 22 feet, but it would be very short, eight feet maybe, if that. But most likely, that can be 25 feet all the way.
Okay.
And I had one question on the parking that you had mentioned. So, this layout takes into consideration that it's a commercial lot to the north, so that parking is close. And then to the west, there is a buffer there that can be made to have screening and trees and whatever. On the, on the drawing, it's maybe, I don't know, five feet, something like that. I don't know what's your preference of how much space that you want to have on there?
Where'd it go?
Go back to the, the 2D.
That's right on the property line. That's the one I'm talking about.
So, you're talking about this?
Right up against residential. This is commercial, yes, I'll grant you that.
Yeah, there's, there's enough room there to have a buffer to the, to the residential property line.
Oh, I see. It looks like it cuts off actually a little bit.
Yeah. That's my, that's my crappy cut and paste work. I mean, we'll get structure point to...
Because I was gonna suggest, especially for the, as the cars are coming towards the end of that drive aisle, those headlights are gonna be pointing right at that house or what would probably be a home lot. So, at least, if nothing else, in that back corner of some evergreen herbivides to help screen.
Should be plenty of room for that. That, in the very corner is all green space, and the intent was to have a strip of green space down to the west.
Okay. I, I just want to say, I like this plan much better than the one last meeting, so thank you. I appreciate you going back to the drawing board. My goal was to get the building off the right of way and push back on the lot, so I appreciate you doing this. I know it took a lot of work.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so in light of the need for additional information, a motion for continuance?
I do think we'll need to figure out the date probably first. I don't know how much, how much time the applicant's gonna need to do their work.
It's not change, right? Dressing cannibal.
Right, it's not significant.
Yeah, get us something more substantial in regards to an alternate treatment system. Oh, I do have one question, Joe, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I saw an email from the county engineer about traffic. Is, is this the one that he's reviewed and...
He hasn't seen, just like fire, he didn't see this one today. I'll send it to them too. But the engineer's office was similar to the fire department of, of the two previous designs prior to today. They prefer, they prefer the one that looks more like this.
Yeah, that, and that makes so much more sense. You're staying away from the little eyebrow island and, yeah, okay. So, in lieu of that, do we want to just have it at our next meeting?
Do we have Romanelli at the next meeting?
Yeah, yes, you have one on the agenda already at the next meeting. I'm not sure they'll provide them enough time to...
I say no.
Get the revisions done for me to review, get you the report, so you can do it all, because I mean, we're talking about like two weeks, I think, at this point. I do know the third September is usually, or the third Thursday of the month in September is usually earmarked for your meetings. Unfortunately, I do see that there's an HOA in here that evening, so you would have to do like the Wednesday instead of the Thursday if that was available, I think. Also, that Thursday in September, that third Thursday in September, as silly as it sounds, is Jug Day at the Delaware County Fair, and that can, if you need an ans, nah, the county, if you need an answer from the county that day, any day of the year, you're not gonna get it on Jug Day, because they're usually all attending the fair.
All right, well, that doesn't affect me. I don't go to the jug booth.
I don't either, I've never been.
My schedule for the month of September, my evenings are pretty well open, so.
You said the 18th is open?
Yeah, let me double check, but I believe it was when I looked earlier.
I don't understand why there's an HOA meeting in here on the 19th. We were gonna hold this room.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I probably need to recommunicate that, that we need to make sure that that third Thursday of the month is held in perpetuity.
Could they maybe move to police?
That's what I'm wondering, if we could use police or...
You, you're the board, you do have authority to decide.
I mean, I can do it on Wednesday, but I think that's a good point that needs to be addressed.
Well, if we can all do it on Wednesday and the rooms open.
It does look like the rooms open Wednesday night.
I say, in the, we need to make that message clear, but I think we can meet on Wednesday, as long as it works for you.
Wednesday, the 18th.
Wednesday, 18th of September?
Okay.
We will be here.
So, then, in terms of revisions, I know the board typically likes to at least have one weekend before to look everything over. I usually need at least a week... I usually need at least a week, probably lead time, to review everything and get the reports out to you. So, um, that would back it up, week before the 18th is September 11th, and then a week prior to that would be the, uh, the 4th. Unless you don't mind getting the report the day of the meeting.
I don't think the additional information is significant.
That doesn't help us. But it, but if we have any questions, we can't reach out to anybody. If you want to vote, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's usually why I try to get it out to you about a week before the meeting.
So, yeah, we, we need some time to do some homework.
I don't know, is that, is September 4th possible for revised materials?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one question about, one comment you made about the back of the building facing the road. Do you want us to give that some more aesthetics, or was that strictly around mechanicals that you were asking?
I'm fine with it. I, it looks like a house. I kind of like that we're seeing the back because of how it looks. It looks like windows on a home, and then you have the end of it had a door. So, it looks like a church or a home. I'm fine with it.
Okay.
But I agree with, with Trustee Antonetts, I don't want an air conditioner or any, that won't look good.
We don't either.
Or if you screen it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready?
I think so.
I move to continue the public hearing for the subject Final Development Plan Application Requested by Mindy Cosman, ZC Case Number 2024-03, also known as Olive Branch, until Wednesday, September 18th, at 6:30 PM in the Township Hall. Additional revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development Zoning Department by September 4th, 4:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Roll call. Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Antonetts?
Yes. Okay, having no more items on the agenda, the time is 7:17. I move to adjourn the meeting. Have a second.
Second.
Rule, rule?
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Antonetts?
Yes, meeting adjourned.